I understand are here to speak with us, so we're gonna move that up to the front of the agenda this afternoon. I like that Superman shirt. Superwoman.
So we'll do public participation, we'll do new employees.
I thought we were doing Carol's.
Well, we kids. They thought, they mistaken, they thought they were.
Next week, I think, I need a book check.
I remember we passed no, she did finalize something, I think.
It has to be there. Oh, no, it's Friday.
Yes, okay.
Wow, that one.
Flying iPad.
Only meeting on my agenda.
Really?
Have a pen.
Good for you. Have a breakfast and end of lunch that day.
Literally no other meetings, that never happens.
So you'll show up in your jeans and t-shirt.
If I can, I sure will. If it stays that way, if I show up wearing a tie or a suit, you know something's next change.
If I show up in clothes, it'll be a good day.
Okay. Well, thanks everyone for your patience and we're gonna go right to public participation because I see we have some special guests who are gonna present under that format and we're looking forward to it, so.
Currently I only, oh, sorry.
Please.
Currently I only have one public participation form, so if someone else has one, I'd be interested in getting that. And it is from Mary Bownap, representing the Network of Michigan Educators, and I think she has some guests with her.
I sure do. I recognize many of you, thank you so much.
Ma'am, would you like to come to the table and if you want your guests to come
too?
Sure.
However, we can make that happen for them.
Is there somebody that'd be willing to tape? Thank you.
Do you want us to pass those out?
Well, I thought, sure. We have lots of things today. I'm gonna share. Five people or more than that? We've got the students to sit right here, I think.
Okay. And then you'll stand behind them or something?
We'll definitely get a voice.
Would you all like to have a cheer? On either side of him? Want a cheer? Okay.
Well, you need help.
You good? Oh, you wanna sit over here? Okay.
Yeah.
Are we all set? Are we all set? Okay.
One from NME, and this is one a local, our local paper just did a feature on this program. Would you, in a few minutes, we'll make sure everybody gets one. First of all, thank you again for allowing us to come, and I really appreciate NME inviting us to attend. I'd like to introduce who I brought. I'm Mary Bownap, and I'm a faculty at Jackson College in charge of teacher education. And this is Camille Pace. She is the 4th grade classroom teacher at McCulloch Academy. And this is Anissa Sumner. She happens to be an education student, a mother of eight, and she is going into teacher education. And this is Michael. And Michael is, Michael help me, I know Michael off the back, come on here. His mother happens to teach, but Michael Trombley is going into education. Michael's being, he's transferring to Eastern Michigan University for secondary, and Anissa is going into elementary, early childhood. And Julie Baker's over here, she is the principal of McCulloch Academy of Jackson Public Schools. The reason why I guess we were invited to come is because McCulloch Academy happens to be very at-risk school in Jackson Public Schools. Ninety-eight percent and above subsidize school lunch program plus. So it's probably the highest risk school in Jackson Public Schools. And what we've had for several years is a partnership, we call it Penn Pal Partnership. So the education students write to the, and they're really excited to read this article because many of them don't get the newspaper. They, we write to the elementary students in, and we've brought samples, anybody's welcome to look at them. Some of them are past samples, we brought present samples, if any of you want to just take a look. We just use these regular, basic notebooks and we write back and forth. So I drop them off, or Julie drops them off, we go back and forth weekly. And when we first started, it was a very basic program, and it's now morphed into much, much more. And Julie can tell you the academic gains. It's been, I mean, I just heard some of the recent test scores at lunch, and I just about, I said, "Oh, my gosh, Julie, you must share this with this group." Because remember, this is the lowest of the population in Jackson Public Schools. So would all of, the four of you here like to introduce yourselves and tell what you like about the Penn Pal program? Just maybe one line and just say your first name.
My name's Tyler, and the thing I like about Penn Pals is how my Penn Pal always tells me about herself.
My name is Derek, and I like how my Penn Pal tells me what he likes and what he don't like.
My name is Anaya, and I like how my Penn Pal likes, like writes a lot.
My name is Jenna, and I like.
You have a great shirt. We like your shirt.
Should we wait just a minute and we'll come back to you? Okay, maybe Camille, you could share a little bit about what you've seen. This is Camille's first experience with Penn Pal program, because as some of us heard this morning, the change, the turnover in at-risk schools and teachers vary. Mrs. Baker's been there for a long time, but the principal, or is a teacher now a principal. But this is Mrs. Pace's first experience.
Good afternoon. This is my first year at McCulloch, and the kids are writing tremendously now. They didn't want to start writing, we were writing in morning journals, and then when the Penn Pal idea came with Mrs. Baker, and then they get a chance to see a little bit of college life too, and then the kids are writing more, they can't wait, they get really excited. Where are our Penn Pal books? They write back. I said, "We just gave them to them, give them a minute to write back," you know. They're always excited to write. And the test scores, like Mrs. Baker, Mrs. Bownap has stated, has come up tremendously. They're writing more, they're writing in everything more, with reading and math, you know, reading the, the problem-solving questions, they're doing much more, they're entertained, you know, they're being entertained too, and then they love to write about what they're experiencing. And then it was funny, because Michael is my former student too. So Michael's my former student too, and Michael played a part in the play, I gave him a part in a Black History play. And it was funny, his Penn Pal was, played the same part, so they were really excited. Michael got excited, and Cedric got really excited that he played the same part. So it's something that they can share. They also, they're giving them math problems to do, so they, you know, along with writing, they give them some challenges with their multiplication. So Mrs. Bownap and I have a multiplication challenge going on when we get to meet our Penn Pals. So they're excited about that, and then they're doing much more, they're doing much better in multiplication right now because of the challenge. So, you know, they're getting them excited, about college, you know, they can't wait to meet them. They met their Penn Pals last year.
Every semester.
It's a semester thing, so they met with their Penn Pals and got very excited about that again, you know, just college. And these are two of the Penn Pals from last year as well. They got very excited meeting with them, doing a little, doing little activities with them, and I think it's very helpful that they go back and forth. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Okay, and then if you want to just take a couple minutes here and hear from the future educators, because as we heard this morning, those of you that weren't here, how necessary it is for future teachers to understand urban learners. So I am an advocate for urban education, I used to teach in Jackson Public Schools, and so I really push urban education, so.
Well, as a future educator.
Good to see that, Michael. I know.
Well, as a future educator, the Penn Pal program gives me an opportunity to work with the children with areas such as math and science. It really does, we have, we do a math problem every, every week, and it helps with English too, because they're writing and reading. The program also gives me insight on how young children learn and think, and it gives me, it gave us an opportunity to witness growth, because the Penn Pal entries from the beginning of the program and towards the end of the program are very different. There's a lot of growth that happens with them. That's all I have to say.
Hello, everyone, and the thing that I have learned about the Penn Pal relationship with these students, we also have a unique ability to mentor some of these children. I know the last time, the last semester child that I mentored, she, we were talking when I met her, and she said she didn't want, I said, "What do you want to do when you grow up?" And she says, "Oh, I don't know," you know. And I said, "What about college?" And she said, "Oh, I don't want to go to college." And I said, "Oh, no, you're gonna have to go to college." And so it also helps us to inspire them and motivate them that it's not just where they're at right now, there is a better way to achieve and to go forward and be out of some of the situations that they are at in their homes. So it is just a great opportunity to just meet some of these young people and just to watch them grow as they write back to us.
Okay, and what we're doing this year is that they're coming out to the college to wrap up the end of the semester, and they're gonna be spending a day there, and of course, the future teachers are gonna be involved, and they're going to be involved in some of the handout activities that are available at college. And they're really excited, that's next Monday, they're very excited to have that opportunity. So I was really interested in this morning's presentation, because when we take a look at cost effectiveness, this is almost nothing to implement. But Mrs. Baker, could you share with the group how this particular, because they've been Penn Pals in another class, every year I never know what age or what teacher, I never know, I just say, "We're here." So we've done this, if you see the article, and other places too. Actually, the Refugee Center in Lansing, we participate in, it really helps with the refugee students tremendously. And then we've done a rural school, Hillsdale Schools, which has had some academic problems. It just depends on who's ready and how many students I have and whatever. But would you like to share with McCulloch some of the academic gains?
I just started in my principalship at McCulloch this year, and prior to that, I was in the classroom for many years, 17 years, and I don't know how long we've been working together, but I was looking.
At Jackson High I worked with.
Yes, I mean, it's been.
With the school.
At least four or five years, if not longer. I looked at our data, our writing data, and of course, it's, it's one of those subject areas that very often is a lower scoring area for students. Four or five years ago, we scored a 0.5% proficient in writing at McCulloch. Last year, we were up to 14%.
Thank you.
And this year, we were, when we tested in the fall, 24%. And those are students that have been participating in the Penn Pal program. They had it last year with Mrs. Bownap, the same group of kids, and they're participating again this year. So the benefit of writing to an audience that they are very interested in, they know who their audience is, they know what their purpose is, and those are two of the strongest drivers of communication. They care if somebody gets the message that they're trying to convey. And I'll tell you what, it's also helped her students, we've talked about this too, because our students, it helps us, because they're constantly looking for errors, they want to see other people's errors in their writing, and it makes them more aware of errors in their own writing. So they love to say, "You forgot the comma in your date," to their Penn Pal. And the Penn Pal feels free to say that back to them, but they become very aware of that, and they care if they're understood. And I think that makes a tremendous difference. And then I also would have to say, just the partnership that we've had with Jackson College, our students every year, because of Mrs. Bownap, get a chance to see themselves in a chair on a campus. It's not just a pie-in-the-sky idea, it's something that becomes very concrete and attainable. And we want them all to have an opportunity to see themselves there on that campus. So we like to put them in a lecture hall or something similar to that, they eat lunch in the cafeteria, and they get a chance to, they're really gonna do a nice tour this time, so it's been a wonderful experience for us.
They also have sometimes, it depends, science opportunities on our campus. We know, and being a child of welfare myself, I know I never would have been in college had I not had the opportunity to have a mentor who said, "You can do this." So I realize how important it is for urban youth to have the same opportunity that I had and some of our students at Jackson College never had, but fortunately along the way. So we know it's really, really a very valuable program. So we were selected to come and share.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so now they're gonna, okay, thank you. Any, is there any questions to anybody?
Well, I just want to thank you. First of all, it's wonderful to see your excitement and the teachers' excitement with this program. As you say, it seems like a simple program, but it seems to be very effective, and that's, talk about innovative, I mean, it can be simple and innovative, so it's very good. But I wanted to tell you that I met Mary Bownap years ago when I visited Jackson High School, and Mary was a teacher there, and we hadn't seen each other in a long time.
Right.
Glad she's doing what she's doing now.
Well, I work nationally now in teacher education, and actually Mike has come down to our state meeting at Jackson College, and I presented this program nationally about four years ago, and it's being actually implemented all over the country. And I've been pushed to write a small direction book on how to do this. And I started it, but I haven't gotten real far, because I'm always busy doing instead of writing. But that's one of my goals in the next year and a half. My colleagues have said, "Mary, you've got to write so other schools can easily implement this." So that's on my agenda.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, young people, for joining us today, we really appreciate it. And you seemed like you were half-interested in what went on this morning, that was very good.
Oh, my gosh, we, we were talking at lunch, the adults here.
Well, that's what I meant.
We loved this morning's meeting. If you weren't here this morning, you missed some very interesting discussions.
Good, good, that's motivation.
And this is the first time that, well, everybody that I brought has ever been to a state board meeting. So you think about that, I mean, just the, and then we've gone to the Capitol, and we've gone to the museum, I mean, we've done it all today, right?
You've reached the top of the hill here, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We just had one other thing.
And we're gonna go right.
I'm sorry, just one other thing. The little girl who's featured here, Maya, she's had some very much, she's been a behavior problem for a while, but she loves to write, and you know, she gets very excited. We can't get her to do anything else, we can get her to write back to her mentor. So just to let you know that too.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Very good.
We're gonna move right to introducing new team members, so.
We have to break this at panel.
Just a moment, we're gonna, but deputies will be ready for that, and then we're gonna, we welcome our new MDE team members to stay as long as you can, or would like to. But I know a few of you can't, so that's why we're gonna do this in a moment.
Thanks for coming. Thank you.
So who would like to start?
I can go.
Okay. Well, maybe, you know what, sorry, I asked you to do that as people are walking out. I think we have Creative Studies guests with us too, looks like, so I'm glad you're here. Yes, ma'am.
So, good afternoon. We are excited to have three new employees in my division, Division of Education Services, and they are Sean Kenica, who's here in our Office of Field Services. Sean, can you just tell them what you're going to be doing with us, please?
Absolutely. Essentially, I'm a project, certified project manager with 15 years' experience of going through business process improvement and, you know, building efficiencies into those business processes. I'll be leading field services through the assessment of their business processes and going through, leading them to more effective and efficient solutions.
Thank you.
Sean's position is something we're trying in my division to help us reduce some of the burden on schools around recording by streamlining our own processes, so we're excited about his position and the opportunity it gives us, so. It's also kind of experiment, so there's a lot of pressure on him to do a good job. So we also have two new staff members in our school reform office, Luana Shelton and Stephen Curry, sorry, try to make sure. So can you guys both tell everybody about what you're doing with our reform office, please?
Well, we work with schools to provide technical assistance, we monitor schools and progress that they're doing on the reform plan that they wrote. So if they have questions, need help, need connections as to resources, assistance with other departments, we're that go-to person for them, make connections with the resources that the state's providing for them in order to ensure success as they move forward.
We do a lot of cross-office coordination and work as well, so we have, each of us have various projects assigned to us and. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have 240 priority schools right now, and we have more that will be added soon, so they're part of the team, and we added resources to the team to make sure that we're serving our highest needs schools appropriately, so.
Great, thank you.
Pleased to announce two new employees in the Office of Great Start, Tisha and Tiffany, and would you both stand and briefly tell the board what your job's like?
My name is Tisha Johnson, I work for Office of Great Start, Early Childhood Education and Family Services, and I worked in other departments and other positions, but I came to this department specifically because, in a secretarial support position, because I was very interested in what our department actually does, and I really wanted to work for this program, so I'm very excited for the opportunity.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Aldrich, I'm a financial analyst in the Child Development and Care Program, so I'll be monitoring the spending plans, budgets, grants, anything financially related for that program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have, in the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, as most of you know, Wendy Larvig is now the Assistant Director, and so we had to find someone equally capable as Wendy. You don't want to replace her, you succeed her. So I am more than thrilled to introduce Ben Williams. And Ben has worked in the legislature for more than 15 years and has extensive knowledge of the legislative process, he has deep understanding of the committee process, from serving as a nonpartisan committee clerk for the past 14 years, he has strong relationships with legislators on both sides of the aisle, which will be beneficial for the department. Ben, would you give a little background as to your education and specifically what you do with the outreach program at Western Michigan?
I'm coming from the House of Representatives as a committee clerk, I've worked under four different administrations, nonpartisans, so Republican and Democrats are important. Very happy to be here and looking forward to working with all of you, I appreciate the opportunity. I come from Western Michigan University, that's my background, undergrad and graduate school. I'm finishing up my master's this semester, if everything goes right. Only two weeks left, so I'm hoping everything's going right. But I'll be done at Western, education field, family life education, family consumer sciences is my background. So I'll be around, starting on Monday, right now I'm still in the House, but my last day is this Friday, but I wanted to come over and say hello to all of you and looking forward to working with each and everyone.
And two things I'd say, one is the only direct hire I'm involved in of the group today would be, would be Ben's position, and there were two really great candidates that the committee worked through, and I think what really struck me was not only the goodwill, intelligence, and experience that Ben brings, I think it's also, the bipartisan stuff's good, you know, if you work through a bunch of different administrations, it's gonna help us over the next long period of time, so. Good addition to the team, and if we could just give all the MDE team members a hearty welcome today. Okay, we're gonna jump right back to the morning, pretend this morning, presentation on financial independence team, and this is where Carol won't cry, because we already took care of that first thing. But Carol and Wendy and Vanessa are gonna come up and fill the board in, agenda planning brought this to the table, and I'll let it speak for itself, actually.
You're right, I won't cry on this one, Mike, other than I won't be here to see it implemented if it ever gets through the legislature.
We can remedy that.
But, but this is an opportunity for us to showcase what we hope is a cross-department and cross-agency teamwork on financial independence team related to providing assistance to districts that are struggling financially. And Mike did share with you the state budget office, one pager that we had at the time in his mid-month report last week, so you probably have a lot of information on that. But we wanted to bring you up to date, I'll talk real briefly about the early warning indicators piece, turn it over to Wendy, who's been monitoring what's going on across the street, and Vanessa will talk a little bit about where the education plans fit in. We did provide a sheet for you, a draft, and it changes regularly, it is very drafty, but the financial independence team came out of a committee that Craig Ruff chaired for the governor last summer, and that was the Governor's Financial Accountability for Schools Work Group, and Mike had asked that I be part of that. One of the things that came out of that group was the need for cross-department work on putting together assistance to schools that we hope don't aspire to become deficit districts. On the chart, the first thing that, that you'll see is a box that talks about early warning signs. And SEPI, the Center for Educational Performance and Information, has the lead to put together the charge in the draft legislation to develop a set of early warning indicators or signs. And these indicators or signs are gonna be based on existing data, so if you hear from the field at all that we're putting together yet another system and we're gonna have to submit new data, that is not true, we're gonna use existing audits, financial reports, their history of borrowing with Treasury, et cetera. So SEPI, Treasury, and MDE will be involved in putting that system together. We've had a couple of meetings, we were waiting for more recent information from the districts to see how we would proceed. The other thing you might hear about from the field is we've learned over time that the school district audits, which are due by law on November 15th, are a bit too late to give us the early warning signals that a district might be in distress, and so we've asked for the legislature to consider changing that date to October 15th. And you may hear some pushback on that as well. It would be really helpful for Treasury and MDE to have that, but the school community is not real enamored with getting their audits done earlier. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Wendy for the less concrete piece of it.
Right, so again, Carol mentioned that the chart has a draft, and it's because the legislation is drafted but has been through several drafts, and in fact, has not yet been introduced. So we are awaiting the sort of finalization of that legislation when it is introduced. We expect the majority of bills to be dropped in the Senate, potentially by the end of the month. But the, the flowchart is, is designed to help explain the process, as we would like it to happen with this partnership between SEPI and MDE and Treasury. And basically, as Carol mentioned, we're looking to get some of the data we normally get from districts in terms of their finances a little bit earlier, so that we can screen it for the early warning signs that will be, again, we're, this is potential, we, SEPI is leading a charge to come up with what those early warning indicators would be. We would be following that. If, if those early warning signs were present, we would jump down to a financial pre-plan, which Treasury would require. We would then, there would be some expectations that the same, again, this is not new data, it's existing data, that they would be providing for screening. If it appeared that they could sort of solve the problem, which of course is our hope, prior to there being a deficit, that would be terrific. If that's the case, then we're done, the school district, you know, gets to go about its business. If a deficit does occur, we transition into what we're more used to, which is the deficit elimination plan that we currently use at MDE. Again, if they are able to get themselves out of deficit, which again, this is our goal, this is what we're hoping for, you know, they complete their debt, again, the school district goes about their business. If we're in circumstances that we're of course not hoping for, they're not able to get out of the deficit, there is what will now be called an enhanced deficit elimination plan. This is managed by Treasury, will again involve more and frequent financial data being shared, some work being done with the district to try to figure out how to help them, you know, transition out of that situation, and then again, assuming that can be done, great, again, district goes about their business. Again, district goes about their business. If not, some of the options which already exist in law are potential places where the district could end up. We know these PA 436 with an emergency manager, consent agreement like we have in Pontiac, some of the other things. So this, again, as Carol said, very drafty, but wanted you to get an understanding of what the intent is with the governor's executive recommendation for this early warning system and this financial independence team. Dr. Kuesler is here because one of the things that MDE really fought for in this effort was the idea that academic plans are very meaningful. So I would like to have her talk about that.
So as we move forward with trying to really be more proactive with our districts around their financial health, recognizing the link between financial health and academic health. And so some of this has come about as we've implemented PA 436. Consent agreements require that you have an ed plan. And so the process of writing ed plans has kind of helped us think through the fact that you can't have a financial plan for a school district that exists in absence of a related educational plan. Those decisions are very linked. So what are the, in terms of that early warning, what are the financial early warning indicators? But what are the correlated academic early warning indicators that help us know when to intervene? And how do you keep the plans synced up early on? We don't want another plan. So what we do right now with the consent agreement districts is we look at their school and district improvement plans. As I said, we need to reduce reporting burden on districts, not enhance it. But we also want to be in a position to help them sooner, so we don't get to these kind of end-of-the-road situations as often as we are. The other thing we'd like to work on doing is, when we think about, you know, like the work of the School Reform Office, they were here. Not all of our low-performing schools are in deficit districts, but certainly having a low-performing school could be something that could be financially troublesome to you, too. So how do you have, how do you help districts from the academic side as well as from the financial side think about how to put themselves on more solid ground for the future? So we, I think it's kind of our, this team gives us an opportunity to expand our thinking about finance and academics and think about them together in a way that I don't know that we have exactly this way before in the department, or really in the state. So trying to make sure we give our districts all the support as possible to provide the best education to students without some of these challenges that we see some of our deficit districts having, so.
This really is getting us closer to being able with a straight face to say we are here to help you. Because part of the problem with the old laws is they just put us in a terrible position that just almost have excessive consequences under the law that we are forced to carry out. This alignment of the education plan and the financial plan, we're testing it out in Pontiac, obviously, the ISD's been a good partner in there. It's in the right direction. It's still not all the way there. I mean, the last testimony which I'm summoned to make every quarter to the combined committee, you know, when I was pressed, I didn't have another way to say it other than we need like a Marshall Plan for these schools. The targeted funds, many of them are in a death spiral that they can't get out of without state support, and we need to just be open to that and not just keep thinking we're going to manage decline. So, you know, I know that, this is why I think it's so important what John and the board are doing on the finance issues and the organization issues, but one of them is just that. I had an interaction with some superintendents the other day that are behind a particular plan that I think is fairly well thought out. My ask of them was that they would consider upping their view of what at-risk money should be in that plan. You know, and there is a room, there is room for categoricals, even if it's not what kind of Tennessee had. But there's room for categoricals to be able to think about at-risk districts with much greater investments. And then we're not in this awkward position of constantly, under the law, kind of going to the next step and inadvertently creating greater educational challenges. So this is in the right direction, ways to go. Cassandra, please.
I have a question and a comment, if I might. So the question is, the one pager that you handed out, I see more reporting requirements, but it's not clear what exactly the help will be for the schools. So can you kind of walk through that a little bit?
Certainly. One of the, you're referring to the State Budget Office document and...
No, I'm sorry, I was referring to the one pager with all the arrows on it.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. That chart, yeah.
Yeah.
So what's not included there is the financial request that's part of the budget proposal allows FTEs for MDE and Treasury, particularly in Treasury. One of their goals is to be able to, should this, all the stars align, and this is what's passed, and this is our budget beginning October 1, for Treasury to engage some consultants, some professionals, who they can sort of dispatch to the district. If I'm a district and, for example, I have a building that's not in use, and I'm trying to figure out how I can work that to my advantage from a financial standpoint for the district, I can reach out to Treasury and say, I need a real estate person. I need someone to come here and look at the building and help me understand how we can work this to our advantage. Or I need someone who knows about benefits and healthcare and that sort of thing. Can you send someone who can help us maneuver some potential changes in the future?
Does Treasury pay for that, or do the schools have to pay for it, like on a contract?
Treasury would pay for that with the funding that they receive, potentially.
If we, right, this is in the budget for us and for Treasury to get these positions.
Okay. As I mentioned to some folks previous, and I'm just going to kind of throw it out there now, I understand we don't have bills yet, so we don't really know what the language is and how this is going to play out in the legislature. And I completely understand the need to help these districts that find themselves in deficit, especially considering we had the largest number last year that we've ever had in the state. But I want to just make sure that we're being very cautious when these bills actually do hit, because the two-pager that came out from the governor's office raised a huge red flag for me, particularly when it comes to the Enhanced Deficit Elimination Plan. Because, and I'm quoting here from the document now, "As a condition of approving an Enhanced Deficit Elimination Plan, the district may be required to enter into a financial recovery agreement with the state treasurer." And it goes on to indicate, in that financial recovery agreement, "Many things may be necessary to address the financial crisis, leading up to the consideration of alternative means of education for the district's students." I don't think it's appropriate for the state treasurer to be approving educational plans. And so I just want to make sure that we are very cautious, that this is not another way for the state to come in and utilize or use a financial situation to take over a school's educational situation. I think that that would be a real detriment. And I would hope that the department would make sure, and I think you would, that the department is the one responsible for that kind of work and not the Department of Treasury. So that's just kind of my cautious optimism of what we're going to see come out of the legislature.
That's a good point. And why don't we just make it clear, maybe even before they're dropped, that this is something we wouldn't be able to live with. So that discourages...
It's clearly the intent of Treasury not to do that. They want nothing to do with academic plans, but it's a point well taken.
Devils in the details.
Yeah. Because it does say in here that those will be approved by Treasury. So I, that's just my cautious, my caution there.
Thank you. Good point. Kathleen?
I echo. I had the same concern that Cassandra just expressed. I think this is, this is needed, I guess, in the current situation, because more and more school districts are facing deficit positions, as well as local units of government. Another city just notified, Lincoln Park, that they're going to have a commission, whatever we do, is look at that and find out and tell them, yes, you have a deficit. They already know that, probably. But what troubles me is that our policies, it doesn't get at the root of the problem, is what I'm concerned about. We've created the system, we've talked about it this morning, we've created a system where we create new schools constantly through charter schools with no cap, no performance standards, no nothing, and that takes money away from the traditional school districts, because it's all from the same pot. They didn't create an additional pot for the charter schools, they took it out of the public schools. And we've, and now with the cyber schools, we just created one thing after another to make it more difficult for traditional school districts to operate. And they get their money based on declining enrollments, so for a charter school opens, they lose schools, students, they lose money. And it's practically impossible to predict and develop a budget. So we've created a situation that's, it's built in to make problems for the school districts. So this is like looking at it after the problem is created. We should be doing something, and I don't know exactly what yet, but I, well, I would put a cap, I would have, would have taken the cap off, but I, now that we've got it, we think we have to point out to people what the situation is that we've created, or that they've created.
That's why we're having the discussions we're having, and we're going to make recommendations about how to do better in terms of how we're organizing schools to actually solve problems and get better outcomes, not make things worse financially and educationally. I mean, that's the subject.
Well, I trust that our plan will do that very clearly, but I think with the rule we point out to people, that the state itself has created the problem for the school districts and the local units of government.
Get blamed for it.
That now we're coming back and saying, well, we're going to help you earlier.
There's the Band-Aid.
Yeah, but you've already got the problem. So I think we have to start talking about that publicly, so that when we come up with a plan, people will understand why we needed it. I just had to get that off my chest, because it's been bothering me so, so much. This is like a Band-Aid, as Andrew mentioned, after the wound is there.
Although, these are good Band-Aid people. We need them. You know, given the circumstance we're in.
This is probably an improvement of what we have.
It is.
But it's not the, it's not the answer, in my estimation. And I thank you for working on it. And Carol, I wanted to say that, well, maybe I could say it at the end of the meeting. Wait until the end.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Michelle, did you have?
Okay. So I'm just kind of following up on that. So if it's not the Treasury that would make a decision for some alternative means of education, is that still a possibility, and how is that decision made?
I'd like to just weigh in quickly. I think, again, the intent is that clearly it's the district, it's the board who makes the decision. So what you have is the requirement to submit a plan, much like a DEP or much like an Enhanced DEP. I mean, they are the ones who make the decision, and they submit that to Treasury. It's my understanding that MDE would have, I mean, we're working as partners, so we would have the opportunity to weigh in on that as well. But it is, the source is the board, the local board. I mean, that's the source. So it's important to keep that in mind. I mean, this doesn't remove their authority to make the decisions that they're making.
But it has to be approved by the Treasury in consultation with MDE?
The financial piece.
The way this has worked with the consent agreement ed plan is that Treasury and Carol's shop work on the financial piece, and they have to approve it. But the ed plan is solely approved by Mike. And so both can, both have to be approved. Both can upset the agreement, but Mike has sole authority over the educational approval.
So what if there is no, what if they're not in the bottom 5% and their educational ranking is not the issue, it's just financial? You still would go in and change their educational?
There is no, none of the deficit districts currently have any, that is not, all of our current deficit districts have academic issues as well. If we came across a situation where a district only had finance and we're doing just fine academically, then I guess the plan submission part, that would be rather short, you know, keep doing what you're doing. But there is clearly a link right now, when you look at our current deficit districts or our districts who are near deficit, between financial and academic health, so.
One of the things that Vanessa said earlier, I'd just like to emphasize, the districts already do through her shop a school improvement plan, or I learned a new term, a DIP, a District Improvement Plan. So we have a DIP, an ADEP, and something else. But all of, we're going to use everything that we have, so that the district doesn't have to redo. So the whole goal is not to make some drastic financial decisions, as Mike said earlier, that continue that downward spiral, because you've made drastic financial decisions, which causes you to lose more kids, which causes you to lose more money, which causes you to make so. This cross-office team here, plus Treasury, with their expertise and all of their financial expertise over there, I think it's going to be really exciting. So they haven't been involved in the past, it's just been MDE that's been? Treasury's been involved with what we would say are the critical districts. If you get some of the districts that have seen 436, public app 436, Treasury is definitely involved. But in our more traditional deficit districts, no, other than if we need some cash flows or something that might affect the state aid note borrowing program over at Treasury, because they have emergency loans and they have state aid note borrowing, and they handle all of that. And so that has precipitated a lot more conversations about the financial situation in a district, just because they might need to borrow. And the more, you know, the more you borrow, it's like home. The more you borrow, the more you rack up your credit cards, the worse off you get. And one last thing. So if you're talking about changing financial measures, with the union, if there's a collective bargaining agreement, I mean, if they have to, because I know others have been called in to come to this room to make cuts in their teacher salaries, and been highly recommended by the department, so...
No. No, I mean, I just need to clarify that we never recommend a salary reduction. We don't, all we do in this is we pretty much, Carol normally does it totally alone, but when I've come in, this is for them to interact with each other. It's totally the board's decision on what they submit.
I'm just going on the testimony of my husband, so.
I thought we clarified that, because we never...
Okay, okay. But regardless, but through this negotiation process, so I'm just trying to understand how it, how this is going to be, how this is working, if it's helpful, what are the consequences of it? If this change is going to make things better for the districts, better for the students? You know, maybe it's left to be seen, but I...
Let me try that.
Yeah, because I've been hearing just from districts that it, you know, I understand it's a hard decision, people have to make these cuts, but it's also in districts that have lost a lot of their tax bases, they've lost a lot of their population because of the economy, because of recession, they, you know, whatever. So, and I guess I'm, I'll just end by saying, I think Kathy makes a really valid point that the underlying structural issue is what we need to deal with, because the way it comes out is that you're punished, or at least school districts are feeling like somehow they're being punished because they live in an economically challenged area. They get punished by, you know, being told you have to make further cuts, further cuts, like that debt spiral.
But I need to just, because it leaves a, you know, I don't know who's watching. We make no decisions about what cuts they should make, as long as they, you know, I got into this with Robert Bob a number of years ago, if you remember, some of you who were here. He left the feeling in a press, in a press release that the state superintendent forced 60 kids in a classroom in Detroit, which, by the way, they never did anyway, but we needed to clarify right away, I have nothing to do with that decision. All we do is, unfortunately, all we can do is, does the bottom line work? And if the bottom line is that you have a deficit elimination plan that gets you out of deficit in a period of time, and in the case for instance...
Well, the teacher salaries weren't pointed out, and that they were being overpaid, that...
By, this accusation's been made over and over, we probably need to get a...
Yeah, I have several witnesses, okay.
By who?
By my husband.
No, but who supposedly said that?
Someone from MDE said that, that they've been watching this school district for a long time, and the teachers are overpaid. And no discussion was talked about the administrator pay, it was only talked about the teachers' pay.
Well, if that, if that happened, that was incorrect.
And so then they met, and then they were told that they didn't do something about it. Their income from the state would cease in less than a month, starting, and so the teachers took that as a cue, and they took a 15% pay cut. The administrators took no pay cut.
Carol, you were in that meeting. What do you recall?
I'd just like to emphasize that when the district comes in here, we require that board members be here. The district is free to bring whomever they want. They often bring teachers, teacher representatives, and other...
We encourage union presidents to be here.
Right. But the message is loud and clear to the board members and to the administrators with the goal that everyone who's sitting here hears the same message, and it is, this is a locally controlled state. Board members, you are here to hear a message about where your district is today and where we see it going. You need to go back and make the hard decisions. We never, ever say, sometimes they'll say to us, can you tell us what to do? And we say, absolutely not. Glenda Rader and Dan Hanrahan do a great job of discussing, and we talk about options, we talk about the seven of eight best practices for another $52. We talk about consolidation of services, consolidation of districts, looking at all of the options that you have underneath the local control. And we send them away with a message... And we send them away with a message, we know that these are tough decisions, but you need to make them, we cannot make them for you.
And I think, I think what we should just do is, I think both Michelle and Cassandra's caution is correct about watching the language of these bills when they actually get dropped and we get the spirit of it. But I would want to leave on somewhat of a positive note that, again, unless it's worded in the way we'd all be concerned about, which I don't think it will be, this is better than where we are now, because where we are now is coming to this room where it, in effect, you know, the spirit of what you're saying, it does force decisions to be made, not in this room, by the way, but when they're all convened by Carol, it makes it very clear, please do something before we, under the law, are required to do the next step, which is to either start, all under the old law, it was the emergency manager, under the new one, it's ultimately can end up in a consent agreement. And if anything, I feel like we've been appropriately flexible. I mean, I don't know how much feedback you got on this, but I got a lot of negative feedback about giving, under my authority, Pontiac 10 years to repay. This new law gave more flexibility on that, so we took advantage of it and said 10 years. Now, you know, a hardcore person could make the case, what's going to be better in 10 years, and that's why I do feel obliged to say it needs a Marshall Plan, it needs resources, because I would admit, they're not going to be able to pull themselves out of this in 10 years. But as State Sup, I'm not going to not give them flexibility to try to stay alive for X number of years. And that's, that's kind of what we, I feel like we continually are working towards.
And I, and I think that you're, you're in as difficult a position as they are, because, you know, just to echo Michelle and Kathy, you know, we talk about the fact that these schools need to make tough decisions, but a lot of the decisions that would actually lead to them being better schools and more financial stability are completely out of their control. They don't get to decide how many new schools open within a five-mile radius, and that affects their budget. And so, you know, and then we turn around and say, but you've got to make these tough decisions to get back on stable footing, but then we keep putting them in a situation where they're never, there's no instability, and it's complete chaos. And I, you know, so I just go back to what Kathy said, this is great that we're looking at this for schools that are finding themselves in financial distress, but it's a Band-Aid. I mean, it's, it does not get anywhere close to the underlying cause of why this is happening, and until we get to that point, you guys are going to be busier, I mean, two and four FTEs are going to be nothing, you're going to be 10 and 12, because that's where we're headed. So I just think it's, it's really unfortunate that we can't, we can't come to some consensus about what's causing this as opposed to, you know, how we fix it.
I mean, I think to John's point, that's, that's the hope when these discussions are done, is that we'll come to some consensus on what those are. I mean, I would certainly agree, I, last year
Let me just say, when I say "we," I don't mean us, I mean
Oh, the wee-wee.
Yeah.
The wee-wee.
Yes.
The big us.
But I think a good example that we all did agree on, we didn't have an impact on it, I don't know, you know, it is what it is, but we all agreed, I think 100% here, that it was premature on the cap off of virtual schools before we had the two that were under kind of supervision piloted out. That was the intent. But what I was going to say is, in a way, we just don't have the luxury in the department of not dealing with what's in front of us now and trying to, at least within the rules we have right now, make it a little better. And probably Band-Aid better is true, but it's still better than waiting till the last minute. And I do think the cautions are absolutely proper about being vigilant, that that's our call, not Treasury's on the education thing, and go from there, but, so we're good? And can I, I missed this opportunity earlier, because he's not a new employee, and we, I did say earlier how Carol has big shoes to fill, but this guy literally has big shoes, so it's possible that Kyle will be the new deputy superintendent, as you know, Kyle, come on up, let's give you
Twenty's early, you don't replace, you succeed, so. He wears size 14s, but
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. He has, and there'll be more opportunities for that, but sorry for not acknowledging that earlier. So thanks, guys. And this next item is discussion regarding criteria for grant program. Any comments or discussion? This will be on the consent agenda. Okay. Close session, I guess I go to, good afternoon. The time is now 2:06, and a quorum of the board is present, the State Board of Ed meeting of April 8 is called to order. We did public participation, great, we did introduction of new employees, and now I saw Richard Rogers was here and his team, so we're looking forward in a moment. I think Joseph and Leah are going to join us at the table here. We're back in the committee of the hall. And, you know, just for context, the State Board of Ed appointed a committee of scholars in September 2007 to review an application from the College for Creative Studies. And that was for probationary approval as an educator prep institution. I'll let them get settled, I feel like I'm always talking over the, the college is being recommended by us for approval, and we'll provide further details. It might be, for some of you who wouldn't know this, but when I was a local superintendent, Richard Rogers wasn't the president, the president was Kathleen Strauss at that time. So, small world, we're going full circle here, and, but we're really delighted, and I'm really happy to see not only the Richard Rogers and his team, but also, I think, some of the folks that were the mentor institutions, I see Karen and some others that, so thank you for all of that, and I'm going to, at this point, turn it over to the two of you.
Thank you. Well, we are really happy to have College of Creative Studies up for probationary approval today, and I'm going to turn that over to Leah, who really knows more about this than I do.
Thank you.
And Flora's on
Leave.
Leave, yes.
Right now, but that's why Leah's here presenting.
I'd like to take a moment and introduce the College for Creative Studies representatives that we have here. As Mike mentioned, we have Rick Rogers, the president. We have Lou Carducci, the academic dean. Nancy Vanderboom-Lausch, who's the chair. Sherry Erskine, is it Erskine or Erskine? Erskine, who is an adjunct art education professor. Sherry Fredericks, who's the department administrator. Laura Pardo is here, she is from Hope College and served as the mentor educational preparation institution for College for Creative Studies through the process. Karen Absenick, right, did I get it right? Who is the chair of our committee of scholars, is also here. And is Su Shinchoi attend? Okay. Or Anita Bates? Okay, perfect, did I get everybody with this? Thank you. Okay.
Sorry, Laura, I mixed that up, you were the mentor institution, so thank you for that.
So we're here to present some information, first about the College for Creative Studies program, and then to kind of update you on where they are in the process and what that means, and then walk through a recommendation specific to their status that will come back to in next month's meeting for adoption, if we have met your needs for information purposes today. Okay? So College for Creative Studies is located in Midtown Detroit. They enroll more than 1,400 students. They seek undergraduate degrees across 12 majors, and they have graduate degrees in design and transportation design. They have two unique sites, both of which you see up there, the Walter and Josephine Ford Campus and the A. Alfred Tubman Center for Design Education. The Ford Campus houses their art education, crafts, entertainment arts, fine arts, liberal arts, and illustration, and the Tubman Center houses advertising, cooperating, advertise design, graphic design, and a host of other programs. The College for Creative Studies strives to provide students with the tools necessary for successful careers in the dynamic and growing creative industries. They have a legacy of recognition in art and design education. They were listed in Bloomberg Business Week in 2007 as one of the top design schools in the world. CCS supplies talent to numerous industries, including transportation, film and animation, advertising and communications, and consumer electronics. Graduates are actually exhibiting artists, teachers, design problem solvers, which I know is important to illustrate from CCS's standpoint, innovators and creative leaders in business. The pictures that you see right here are from their sculpture studio on the left, the graphic design studio on the top, and their fiber studio on the bottom right. The College for Creative Studies has a close working relationship with the Henry Ford Academy. The schools work together, and they, well, sorry, let me, let me start over. Henry Ford Academy enrolls more than 800 students in the middle and high school, and the partnership allows CCS to provide, to demonstrate their artistic abilities and explore and allow students to explore the many creative fields within the art industry. As a public school academy, all the students there, of course, are enrolled tuition-free. The CCS requires their teacher candidates to complete an area of study, known as a major area of study within art, as well as completing the art education requirements. The CCS website states, in order to teach art, you must first become an artist. Students are required to choose a major area of study within the 11 major curricula, and they learn how to become an educator over the course of their education. They also master a craft of their chosen major, making them a professional educator and an artist. CCS takes an interdisciplinary approach to training art educators as well as teaching art, and the conceptual approach is that in order to effectively teach art to elementary, middle school, and high school students, the educator must know how to educate. They must know how to educate across all disciplines of art, including art history, criticism, 2D, 3D, and digital art forms. At CCS, candidates are educated as a cross-disciplinary artist. We're going to talk a little bit now about the process. There are three stages in our approval process, the preliminary, probationary, and full. The College for Creative Studies is currently operating as a preliminary-approved EPI. The State Board granted that preliminary approval in 2003 for the purposes of offering an initial secondary certificate with K-12 visual arts education endorsement. The College of Creative Studies was appointed a mentor institution at that time, and during this stage, that preliminary stage of the approval process, CCS operates under the mentorship of Hope College. CCS is seeking probationary approval, the next phase in the process. This part of the process requires the committee of scholars to review their application for probationary status. In 2007, this committee was formed, as Mike already mentioned. It was comprised of university and K-12 faculty and administrators. Between 2007 and 2011, the committee of scholars reviewed the application, requested additional information, and met with the CCS faculty and administration. They have reached a unanimous decision to support the application for probationary approval. Probationary approval means that you, the State Board of Education, would extend their approval for three years, that CCS would have financial and program independence from their mentor institution, and that means they take the sole responsibility for recommending their candidates for certification, examining their program data and their evidence, and monitoring their program's success. During this time, CCS is required to demonstrate continued successful implementation of their visual arts program, and they have to address any conditions noted by the committee of scholars prior to their final approval, in which they only had one area. Based on the success in these areas, MDE would expect the application for CCS for final approval in 2017. And what this means is, right now, we're bringing to you a recommendation, or the state superintendent, Mike's bringing you the recommendation, to recommend the College for Creative Studies for preliminary approval as an educator preparation institution in May of 2014. Probation, I'm sorry.
And as you know, we do this a month before to give an opportunity for your interaction and then do more formal approval next. Now, Dan, I saw your hand first.
So two things, one is, I'm a big fan of CCS generally, maybe three things, really quickly. I had no idea that our own Kathy Strauss had been president of CCS, wow! Like, already thought you were incredible and just blown away now, literally. Three is, so CCS as an EPI would only be engaged in preparation of art teachers, or does this, does this extend to other areas as well?
Right now, it's K-12 visual arts endorsement only.
What a better place. Kathleen?
Well, naturally, I'm delighted to see how this has progressed. When we did this before, I abstained from voting because I thought I had a conflict of interest, but that's more than 10 years ago. Now, it's been 25 years or something, so it's, I think I can vote for it this time. But we talked about developing an art education program when I was still there, so it was really great to see it come to fruition. And I, it would be great, because I, I knew students who worked in schools, and after they graduated, they volunteered in schools, and they loved teaching, and they have such an enthusiasm and such talent that they really turn the kids on. It was, we want to promote art in the arts in the schools, so this is a very good step.
Along with the international reputation, really.
Right, and I liked that what you said is the reputation in the world, not just the United States, in the world.
Other, John, or Lupe than John?
Piling on, but
Lupe than John, sorry.
I'm excited about this, and Kathy, you're still, you're still conflicted, you got them on the right path here, and Rick has them, he's just screwing it up, but I just wanted to know, I mean, College of Creative Studies is such an incredible creative institution, and Rick, you and your team have done such wonderful things, but it's also, it's so critical for a growing presence of exciting applied education and people into careers in Detroit. And I know one of the interesting commitments I know you all have is, we talk about the creative economy, the all these jobs in these fields, but often that has not been young people of color who have, find their way into these creative professions. I know here we have an institution, it is among the best creative institutions in the world, committed to try to create avenues for young people from Detroit of color to build their skills and participate in these exciting creative fields, which really are the economy of the future. So I wanted to applaud that commitment and also another addition to your toolkit, I guess, in terms of how you can contribute to that, that dynamic in Detroit, and, for the benefit of Michigan and Detroit and its residents, so thank you.
Lupe, please.
Well, I echo what everybody has said, this is a great opportunity for many, many students. It started in 23, 2003, right? 2003. Why does it take so long, why does the process take so long?
In our prep yesterday, we said, get ready for this question.
We anticipated this question.
Yeah.
There isn't a timeline associated with the approval process that really is dependent on how long the institution needs to work through it. It's also dependent on the staffing at MDE and the priorities that we have here. There was a lot of staff turnover during their process, and every time there was some staff turnover, we had to become new partners and refamiliarize ourselves where they were in the process. So I hope we've at least met their needs to get them to this point, although it may not have been super speedy.
And they've been certifying teachers, this did not, this, you need to understand that, so it's not, that's not prohibited, that. And then in addition, I don't know if this is appropriate to say, I think it is, as long as I don't mention institution, but we had a change in mentor institution there that required some time. You know, you needed the appropriate mentor, and that's, that's what happened for a while. How many teachers maybe have come through?
68 have this.
Sixty.
We've certified 68 teachers over.
So that's
Well, congratulations, it took so long, congratulations, he's finally here.
Right.
I'd like to recognize Hope College, too, because they really have been a wonderful mentor. You know, they've enabled us to be effective at this, regardless of our stage in the approval process, it's been a terrific collaboration.
That's great.
Well, you know, that makes me even happier, because somebody from the West Side is saying
Yeah, we knew where your real question was going.
Something from Detroit, moving.
I had a couple of miscellaneous questions, although some of them have been answered. 68 teachers, how many do you currently have in the program now?
Four in the board.
Very good. I really appreciated the philosophy of, you know, be an artist first, and then you can teach, we should, you know, we should consider that for some of our other certification areas, be a scientist first, before you can teach science, and so on and so forth. And I'm very familiar with the campus on Woodward, where's the other campus?
The Ford Campus is on John The Ford campus is on John R., just behind the Detroit Institute of Arts.
Okay.
And then the Tomlin Center is up, just, it used to be called the Argonoff Building, right behind the original GM headquarters, just south of the original GM headquarters. Yeah, one block in, again, it's one block west of Woodward.
Very good, very good. And I wanted to ask, how many, and I think this was mentioned already, you got, what, 1,400 students altogether?
Just over 1,400 degree students.
Very good, very good. Well, I wish you well, and pleased to hear, I'm particularly interested in specialized programs like this. I think that's what our state really needs, is a diversity of curriculum efforts. Thank you.
And you have some K-12 folks, students?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. I don't know if the board was aware of that. In fact, I, John?
I just wanted to know on the, how come it takes so long? I mean, we, we here, and sometimes are criticized, or there's, there's a concern, are we being rigorous enough in who gets to be a teacher? And are teacher preparation institutions being even enhanced in the quality of what they do, including even who they accept, to be excellent teachers? And so, this is one of those domains, I think, where we're just not giving away the license to teach to anybody that wants to open a pop stand of teacher education, which is really important, because one of the things that we are always trying to even figure, how do we up the ante for Annual Bridge Magazine and others are editorializing that our entry bar is too low to become a good teacher? Well, this is, I think, is good evidence that we are wanting to, and we need to keep having it be really high, so that we get excellent teachers educating our kids.
And I saw Robert LaFever back there. I just want to say, I think he does a great job as a new leader of the Private College and University Association. We've had some great interactions that have, I think, helped move the ball in the spirit John says. Any other comments or questions for the board? Okay, thanks, guys. Thank you. You can see it's going to be a tight vote next week, or next month. How about approval of State Board of Education minutes? The item E, so it's moved by John, supported by Cassandra. Any discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same? Thank you, they're approved. President's report.
So, I was going to say, and it's to Kathy's point. So, we are going to start inviting stakeholders to share their recommendations on this topic, and it's to this issue, the whole reason we're doing this, is what are the root causes? What are the big changes that we need to make so we're treating Band-Aid? It's more than a Band-Aid, it's, you know, after the amputation. You know, here's, here's.
Enternicate?
Right, so we have to figure out how to avoid the amputation, and, and have very good ideas of what kind of the interesting and effective solutions will be, including the one that's, you know, one of the hottest topics, what sensible choice charter policy? And there are some interesting ideas of how we do a much more rigorous job of ensuring quality, not having the chaos that we have now. I heard from a Republican, an interesting idea, how about a certificate of need, like a hospital? That if you want to open a charter, you have to pass some sort of certificate of need. That's a different way to solve the problem. So we need to entertain ideas like that, which is what we're doing. So if you have folks you want to see contribute written materials, and we can decide how much time or little we give people for equal airtime among the stakeholders, now that we sort of run through a lot of good policy experts. And then we need to wrestle with, and we will, make sure we do, what are our analysis and recommendations, so. But I also wanted to say, Carol, if there has been a steady source and undercurrent in this department of leadership and integrity and competence, that I, even before I had anything to do with the board, I think we had some interactions on policy way back when it is you, and I just wanted to herald that and herald your contributions, and we're going to miss your strength and that consistent, steady flow of incredible competence, integrity, and commitment to people in Michigan and our education system, which has been a constant here, so I can't imagine what it would be without you and that. But thank you very much for your incredible work and service, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Kyle's going to be great, but Carol, we will miss you.
I just wanted to add to that. It wasn't mentioned, it was mentioned that Carol has been deputy superintendent for a long time, but when I met her, she was working the community college, which we then had in the Department of Education, where I think it belongs.
You were president of that board.
It goes back before, I was on the state board, I was on the state board for public community and junior colleges, as it was called in those days. It was transferred to wherever it is now, I'm not sure what department it's in now.
They're largely independent.
That's when I met Carol, she was in, we were both young then.
We were. I was 12 and you were 16.
Well, thank you. John, is that your? My report, let's see. I did, I mentioned to the board in writing that, not that you'd necessarily be concerned about this, but every place I've left, they've needed to up the salary because things change. And that may or may not be the need here, as you do your homework and all that, but if that were to happen, don't think twice about it. Especially when I saw yesterday that there's two CEOs of Chipotle, and they each made 25 million last year. So I think you don't have to, the world's gone out of control here somehow. Although the, the Mexican food's okay. And then I do think I'm going to try to do this on a serious note each meeting, is to mention a few things, not only for, not only for the board, but I thought potential applicants who, who believe me, are watching on the internet. If we haven't had interest in the past, they're starting to watch now. And I think that's a good thing, so they'll start to get a sense of the good, the bad, and the ugly. But some of the things that I think the job entails that aren't obvious from being here or watching the meeting, so just, some of these you do know. I mean, this is just in the last few weeks. The external meetings are, made two school visits, met with the School Counselors Association, spoke at the Michigan Association of Non-Public Schools, radio interview with Mark Bayshore, as John often does, met with reps from the Michigan Network of Educators to discuss their third-tier proposal, they're possibly interested in trying to certify at that level. Taped a podcast for Ottawa County, which is doing a great job on a new reading initiative. Spoke to the Dearborn League of Women Voters, ran into Michelle as I was leaving, so I don't know if we crossed paths or didn't, but spoke to MSU's College of Education, met with a number, more recently Representative Zemke asked to meet on some ed issues, which was interesting. Met with the Tri-County Alliance, serve on the Governor's Talent Investment Board, which is by position, although most of the time, Alice Ann covers that, kind of her past life, so it's really a good, a good thing for me and us to have her repping us there. And then, even though it kind of came out earlier, I'm not officially a member of the Governor's Cabinet, and I think it is good that, when we're invited, and I'm, I'm not sure I'm in all the meetings anymore, but I'm in, I'm in those meetings. Then some internal activities, I mean, you know, well, you, you heard indirectly, these two gentlemen got to do interviews that ended up with their final selection. Meetings with direct reports are starting for annual reviews, and with those, I'll just be candid, what I do on those is, maybe I shouldn't be this candid, but I don't think your civils is really, you know what? Let's write what you think is appropriate for the record, but let's be candid about the strengths and weaknesses, as you see it, of me and of you, and how we can further that relationship. So I, it works really well if you're not worried about what civil service is going to see in a written document. And if that's illegal, I'm leaving, so what are you going to do? But it really is productive, I think, because there's very few weaknesses, frankly. In fact, what I find, I've done this for 25 years, starting with principals back years ago, and people are always harder on themselves. You know, and it gives me kind of a chance to say, "I don't see that at all, I've never heard that, I wouldn't get all, you know, don't get all fussed up about it." But in this, in another area, maybe there's something that, you know, you do see that you want to talk about, so that's been very good. Supes Group, I don't know that I could possibly overstate the intensity of soup group meetings, which are typically on Friday, all-day Friday. And based on the feedback I got at annual evaluations last year, you know, it was clear that when they don't have to be in an item, people would like to excuse themselves from that item. So we kind of start with, in fact, I'm not usually the one who even makes the item, it's usually whoever's got a decision that needs to be made, and it comes with background that I usually review beforehand, everyone does. But I think a good improvement was, you can opt out, because sometimes you're sitting there thinking, "Okay, I don't really have anything to add of value." On the other hand, I encourage them not to opt out, because I said this to Carol the other day in kind of our exit interview, that I think she's added tremendous value at times on issues that are not hers, because she's not too immersed in it, and vice versa. You know, you start to see, "Well, had you thought about this?" You know, but when you're right in it and you've been working on it hard. Initiated state aid advance, I, kind of to the spirit of what Michelle and I were talking about earlier, I always err on the side of trying to make it easier for the districts if it's within my authority. I don't think I've turned down an advance yet, although, you know, there are times you, are you creating other issues? We did, we did, under the law, need to start the preliminary review for Benton Harbor. That doesn't mean for sure it's going to end up in a consent agreement. I admire what the board and the superintendent there have done. I think this fits very much the example that both Kathleen and Cassandra were talking about, that much of this cannot be remedied at the district level alone. We spent a lot of time on the MDE's closing the achievement gap for African-American young men, that Deb and her team have kind of spearheaded, but everyone's involved in. I, whenever I can, make the brown bag lunch in this room, and it's amazing how the department has embraced this across all levels, you know, to the degree that our lunchtime is our own time, ha-ha. That's really encouraging to see, people that are here and thinking about it and working on it. We had a really good Critical Friend meeting this last couple of weeks. We furthered some of this work on the Michigan Department of Ed Culture of Reading. I think it's going to really help some of our poorest kids not only get books, but get them in classrooms, and then, and then also help the parents become full partners. One of the problems with some of the book programs is, is you get a book, but the parent doesn't read. So that's problematic. And this one is, as I've sent to you before, I think has, the team really invented some smart grant-type process for just, for teachers around that. We reviewed and approved recommendations for consolidation grant awards. We've spent a lot of time trying to not only get the Ed Flex, I wouldn't call it renewal, it's this extension, it's kind of an interim extension to get, that has to be in by the end of April, it's not even a renewal. But frankly, our biggest problem on that has been trying to work a communication plan so that the field and others really understand the consequences to them and to everyone if we don't get that. Talked about it here at the board table, but I don't know that it's really sinking in what it means to lose your waiver and put at risk a billion and a half on title money, not allow the set-aside improvements we're trying to make in this current one, which I think Kalamazoo and some others had cited. So that takes time. You know, all of these are probably a minimum of a half hour, often an hour and 15 minutes, and they're boom, 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 boom. I don't get to opt out. So my wife tells me that's, you know, like, the toughest evening is usually Friday, ironically. So that's just to give kind of a, a sense, and we'll try to do this, because I do think even applicants, who, a lot of people have talked to me, you can tell they're kind of feeling you out, whether they say that or not, and I think it is important for them to know, it's mainly a great privilege, to say the least. It's also got challenges that people would need to understand, and sometimes we've even talked to you, I appreciate the, the understanding that kind of even came up today in a way, you're between a rock and a hard place on some issues, is governor stuff, there's, you know, there's a lot of different things to try to keep in the air, and I think with this great team, we've done pretty well at that. And then finally, April's the month of the young child. If you haven't seen some of the paraphernalia out on the front desk, we'd like you to grab it on the way out. We've had, you know, this is just a great way to call attention to really, I think the board's been the leader on that historically, and finally had seen some concrete results with things like the 65 million put into four-year-olds and the rest, but. I guess I would just hold this up rather than bore you with it, but it was interesting, Marty came up with this idea, and I thought it was pretty good, Marty and Karen maybe, that the nature of this job, you get asked to read in classrooms all the time, and you just can't do it, really. So they came up with, "Well, do a podcast," you know, "and read a book in a podcast." I don't know if you had a chance to see that, but it's funny how much mail we got back on it. I really feel like grandpa when you get all these kids that have actually watched and read to them. So it was a good idea, and appreciate them coming up with it. And I think that, made some points about NAEP and Ed Trust earlier, I wanted to do it while, because I think they're, I genuinely think they're making a tremendous contribution and pointing it out. I do think there's a balance between seeing the reality and not demoralizing, you know, 4,000 schools to the point they can't function. And that's why I thought Joseph did a good job in, in kind of describing, "Yeah, we're not really where NAEP has us on fourth grade reading, but don't pretend there isn't improvement towards that, there is, and it's demonstrable through our NAEP scores." And I wanted that to be said openly and hopefully reported, because the teachers are making a difference there, they just haven't quite reached this, you know, so you don't get credit for that improvement there until you actually hit it. And that's why it's, it's not malicious, but it's why that can be deceiving. I really do think, by the way, I didn't learn this till a Supes Group item, it, it never occurred to me, that the nature of smarter balance and the nature of the constructed responses that kids are going to be familiar with in that test are actually going to help them because of their familiarity with it in the NAEP. You know, that doesn't excuse, again, where we are, we need to keep moving, but it is one example where Tennessee and some others already have similar tests that kind of have kids ready for that. So I thought I'd mention some of those, because you need ammunition, too, as you're trying to, you know, keep everyone's spirits up at the same time. Okay, Gary, yes, ma'am?
The Initiative for Public Policy, which used to be the Initiative for Human Services, issued its Kids Count Report again, and I just got it in the mail with a little cover sheet that they focused on the growing gap between African-Americans and white students. And I thought it might be a good idea for send them some, something on what we're doing with African-American, you know, to let them know officially from what we're doing, so that they can incorporate that into what they're thinking and planning.
Yeah. Are, do they happen to be partners right now? I think they attend some.
I, I don't know if I brought it with me or not, I might have. No, that's state policy, teacher policy. I don't think I did.
Well, let's do that. Let's take Kath's suggestion, first of all, maybe even as an active partner, but minimally what we're doing and letting them be aware of it.
They're having a conference in May.
Oh, really?
On this, I think, not focused entirely on that, but that's going to be part of it. I'm going to be gone, so I can't go, but maybe someone from here.
Maybe we can get on their agenda.
Yeah.
To present and what?
You might want to call Gilda Jacobs.
Will we do that? We'll get in touch with Gilda? And that would be great, minimally attend, maybe present if it's not too late, and then...
I don't know if they have their program set up already, that I don't know, but it's worth inquiring about.
Okay.
I had another question on the grants, the ARR-A grants, I haven't seen it referred to as ARR-A for a long time, but SIG grants, in other words. The first high school that got a grant was Albion, and now that's folded, and they're, the kids are going to school with Marshall. So does that SIG grant, does that end, or does the money follow the kids as they, what happens with that?
They, they worked to have the funds be able to continue throughout the grant, how they worked that, but that, that first round of SIG funding is actually ending, so there's new SIG funding coming down the, so.
So did they get, I didn't follow through, did they get a second grant? Does the Marshall get the grant then?
They, it was complicated with building codes, but they figured out how to help the kids, just kids keep the money, basically, so. But again, that's the original SIG grant, those funds are retiring, and so with new SIG funds, they have to apply, and, you know, it's not, there's not more money coming at them, it's, but they just figured out how to keep the blunt funds.
Because it'd be interesting to see how those kids do when they get to Marshall, it's sort of a, two different cultures.
Yeah.
It'd be difficult to meld.
Public radio gets.
I, yeah, I just, I don't know enough about what's happening there, it'd be interesting to find, follow that up and see how that is going. I don't know, do we do that? I don't know, do we do that?
Yes.
Does somebody from the department follow up with something like that or?
No, but there were a couple of articles that ran.
Bridge?
Last week, there's just some articles about how well it's working. And there was in the news, it was known today that you, that you get every day.
Maybe I didn't see that one.
We'll find those and bump those to you again.
Oh, okay.
They said there were challenges too, though.
Yeah. And you know, certainly, I mean, again, this is, in some ways, I get your point about Band-Aid and tourniquet, that I'm making almost a false comparison here, but I would say this, that minimally, it's certainly a better way to do upfront and think about handling than suddenly what happened in Inkster.
Right.
Where suddenly you just don't have a high school and then, and then...
Yeah, I know.
Kids are just kind of put in other places. That one I am, that one I am worried about, not, not Albion. I think that's been thoughtfully done, they were here, some of our staff worked with them during that transition. And not that there aren't challenges in different communities, but this other one, I mean, even anecdotally, I think we'll have to be careful and watch what's happening where kids have just been, you know, and in fairness, they didn't have the time, that that's the beauty of the Albion thing, is they're thinking about what are the things, the needs of these kids before they're suddenly thrown into a high school overnight, into a different place. I mean, even things for a lot of kids was for me, I'm not above this, sports and band and some of that, where do I fit in now, you know, I used to be the quarterback and now am I going to another, you know, and these things all change that, and I think that's the major problem with the dissolution type process, that's just, you talk about an overreaction, it's one reason we're somewhat, I get all your points earlier, but why we're somewhat optimistic about the interventions that they're trying to get earlier, just because there's been so many clear dramatic changes when we don't get up ahead of this, that one being like the worst I can think of. Well, Gary, the new dad.
Pictures.
We're ready for you, sir.
Okay. Bring this up.
Know what you're starting with, I think I know.
See if, see if you can guess.
If you spell dad backwards, it's the same. Gary is not.
That's why he's president.
Well, I'm sorry.
These are the kids will tell you.
That's right.
They're not old enough yet, but they're old.
Eventually we'll be there, I'm certain it'll go quickly. Well, I did miss all of you last month, and I did have some really important work to take, take care of, so I wish I could have been here with you, but I'm a new dad, as you all have heard, and I really appreciate all the sentiments and well wishes, and everyone has just been so thoughtful and warm about it, I really appreciate that, and so does my family. So I, if I've learned one thing this year, I've learned one thing this year as Michigan Teacher of the Year, it is that one must begin their presentations with pictures of their family. I have learned this both here at this table and in working with other state teachers of the year, that it is, is just so important to connect with your audience. And until now, I never really had, I mean, I had pictures of my dogs, but who wants to see dogs? So this is Lena Josephine, and she was born on March 10th, and she's just been such a wonderful addition to our family and just really shifts my perspective. My younger brother, who lives in New York City, says, when you're the baby of the Michigan Teacher of the Year, you have to read your parents a good night story. This is a fun, fun picture that we staged last week, I was reading, I'm reading this book as part of the Galileo Teacher Academy, and I made the joke that I needed to put her to sleep, so I gave her something really heavy and dense to read. But it's just been, it's been a great first four weeks, and it's really encouraged me to kind of shift my thinking. And as I start to get back on the road, I'm an avid runner, and as the season has broken, I've gotten back on the road, and I ran into literally, someone had graffitied this message on one of the sidewalk stones near my house on my running path. And I just thought it was such an interesting timing for, as I'm shifting my perspective as now a dad, and as the year is kind of winding down as Michigan Teacher of the Year, just the message keeps coming back in everything that I do to see the best in things. And for those of you who are parents, you probably know this better than I do at this point, but it really has helped me to focus on, on the good things. And everything I hear at this table each month just reaffirms for me that all of you have the best intentions of kids in mind and all the decisions that you make here at the department and in your work around the state, and it's been really inspiring to me, so I've been glad to be part of it. April is a number of months at a variety of different levels, but one month that was personally important to me is its National Donate Life Month. And so I had the opportunity as a cornea transplant recipient to speak with the Secretary of State Ruth Johnson at Wayne State University last week in honor of the kickoff for National Donate Life Month, and I got to share my story of how being a cornea transplant recipient really impacted my life and helped me to realize the success that I've had, both personally and in my career. It has led me to start asking the question, which I never have before, to others, that if they haven't, to consider becoming an organ or tissue donor. It's something that you can do at any secretary or state office, and one of the great initiatives that Ruth Johnson's office has done is that everyone, when they go to do their renewal at the secretary of state, they now get asked if they'd like to consider becoming a donor. So they have a campaign called I Must Ask You a Question, where we ask people to consider organ donation. Along those lines, this was a picture, I recently learned that Instagram has a blurring filter to help you focus in on certain parts of your image, and I'm not a photographer by any means, but it's been really helpful for me in doing my photo journal this year, to be able to start highlighting certain points in a photo that capture the essence of what I was doing. And so this is myself, I was working with a group of elementary reading specialists a couple of weeks ago, and we were working on literacy strategies with iPads. This group of elementary reading specialists was the recipient of a grant, and their team all got iPads and Apple TVs for their classrooms to work with their students, and so we worked on a variety of literacy strategies that could be supported with iPad apps, as well as some collaborative apps where they can plan and do their lessons together without having to be in the same place at the same time, because they work throughout nine different As I've mentioned before, I'm a teacher leader in the Galileo Academy, and right now we're focusing in on classroom research, which dials back to that original picture with the book. And I'm working on a project right now examining different grading methods in high school science classrooms to see if there's one grading method that has a stronger correlation to student achievement at the state, state level than another grading method. So I'm comparing what are called standards-based grading methods, where students' grades are determined based on their performance on a rubric that's used to evaluate an assessment aligned to standards. These are local assessments that are given in the classroom, and we're looking to see if a grade in that student's class, based only on assessment performance, has a stronger, weaker, or the same correlation to their performance on state tests in that subject area compared to traditional grading approaches that take into account participation, extra credit, projects, and a variety of different sources beyond just performance on assessments. Hope to have that wrapped up by the end of this month for a presentation at the beginning of May, and I'll have those results to share with you next month as well. I did have the opportunity to work with a group of teachers from around the state at Schoolcraft College at the earlier part of this month, and I was asked to run a workshop on instructional strategies for what they call 21st Century Teaching and Learning. And so we're working here on something called challenge-based learning. It's something that we do in the career world each and every day. We are doing things that are task and challenge-based, and we have to kind of wrap our minds around creating a solution. So this is called the Marshmallow Challenge, and teams of four or five are challenged to build the tallest freestanding tower made out of dry spaghetti, tape, and string that can support a marshmallow on top. They're given exactly 18 minutes, no more, no less. And the interesting thing about this challenge is that it teaches teachers some really important lessons about teaching and learning for their classroom, and that is that there are one of two approaches to solving this challenge. The one is that you can plan, 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 try your approach and see whether it works or not, or you can get right to building, try something, see how it, get your feedback from it, see how it's working, reiterate, redesign, reposition, and go based on a variety of iterative processes. At the end of the challenge, what we find is that the younger students who have done this in teachers' classrooms are more apt to get right in and start crafting their, their solution. They don't sit there and jockey for position of power or argue over ideas or theoreticals. They get right to work, and when they see something doesn't work, they use that feedback to change their design. And so it's, it's a metaphor for that teaching can be experiential, and it doesn't have to be absolutely the first time you get it right and that's it, but rather that learning can be an iterative process, and it's a way to foster a growth mindset in students as well. So it was a really great experience for teachers to go through this and kind of see firsthand what that can mean for their classrooms, and then we work on how do we repurpose this for different content areas and grade level expectations. I was invited to speak at Michigan State University to their College of Education, and they had their third annual I Am a Teacher Expo just a few weeks ago, and this was a really great opportunity to connect with pre-service educators, and boy, Michigan State has a lot of pre-service educators. I did not realize just how big their program is, I had heard about it, and it's kind of legendary, but it really and truly is everything that they say it is. So it was great. And I had the opportunity to speak with them about how creating your own unique brand of education and packaging that almost in the same way that industry would brand and market their product can be very valuable to communicating the message you want your classroom culture to be like and helping your students to achieve more buy-in to your educational practices. Further from there, I had an opportunity in my working gross point as an instructional coach to work with a number of classrooms on a large district-wide grant project to put Apple TVs and iPads into the hands of teachers to help support 21st Century Teaching and Learning and Bring Your Own Device projects and pilots. So this month, I've spent a lot of time training teachers on using Apple TVs in the classroom, which if you're not familiar with an Apple TV, it's a device that will let you connect to internet content, but it will also let you show the screen of your iPad in real time up on your projector without having to be connected by a physical cable. And so it really allows for students and teachers to connect with their devices wirelessly to the projector and be able to share information and collaborate in real time. And without the wires, it makes it really handy for making class more interactive and more engaging. This is a photo of a seventh grade social studies classroom demonstrating that the technology, whatever you see on the iPad, shows up on the screen wirelessly, instantaneously, and students can also share work that's on their device if they happen to have one with them on the screen as well. It gives us a really great opportunity for kids to make their thinking visible to the rest of the class, and it saves that transition time that would otherwise have a student walking up to the board and recreating their thought a second time on the board in some way. And they're only about $100, so it's a really high leverage and cost-efficient piece of technology that plays nicely with the bring your own device world that many of our students currently reside in. I had the opportunity also to speak at Wald Lake Schools for a statewide conference of middle school educators, and the Michigan Association of Middle School Educators invited me to speak at their conference this year. The theme of their conference is the core is in the middle, and it was a two-day conference all about the common core. There were a variety of different workshops and great offerings from teachers around the state, teacher leaders in every different subject area. They asked me to give the keynote message, and this year is when I've really learned what a keynote means. I always thought that it just meant you get to talk for an hour straight and everyone listens to you, and that's part of it, but it wasn't until this year that I realized I had to have one single message, one very important keynote. And as a science teacher, I used to think that the common core didn't apply to me. But as I've become more adept in my educational experience, I've realized that the common core really applies to every classroom, and we're working to up the standards for all students, and that might mean something different for Kathleen's classroom than it might for my classroom, but it does have an impact in every classroom in some way or another. And so that's where we kicked off the conference with. I did run into perhaps an old friend of some of yours, if you've been here since 2009, this is Jen Haberling, she was the 2009 Michigan Teacher of the Year, and she just happened to be giving a workshop that day that was standing room only with one of her colleagues on standards-based grading at the middle school level. It was a great presentation, just questioning our traditional approaches to grading and assessment, and how we may not necessarily have a rationale as teachers all the time for what we do, because some of it comes out of just the tradition that we've grown up and been trained in. And so it really pushed us to question what might be the best practices to help make learning more accessible to all students through our grading and assessment feedback groups. Finally, the, the month has been a little bit less busy on the state-level education travel because I've been focusing inward a bit more on the family, but I did have an opportunity to, to work on a project going on in Metro Detroit and help promote this event called Bookstock. And Bookstock, Michigan is an annual event run by a nonprofit called Bookstock, and they do a book recycling and media recycling program, so you can donate your used or gently used books and CDs and records. And then they have a fair, or a market rather, where they sell these, and you can go and pick up used titles of a variety of different media, and the proceeds all go to support literacy projects happening in Metro Detroit. And the media and the books that are not sold at the event are then also distributed to literacy projects all around Metro Detroit. It's a great cause, and as a new father, I've really become tuned into the fact that reading is so important very early on, and I know I've heard it at this table from a number of presentations and comments, that projects that can help us to close that 30 million-word gap and help prepare kids for literacy and hit the ground running in schools is one of the most important things that we can do. So I really had a great opportunity to support this project, and it was just such a cool, cool idea. And then finally, I've had the opportunity this month to advance my work in STEM education around the state. I've been working with elementary teachers on bringing science to life for their students. Often, reading, writing, and math are the focus in elementary schools, and science and social studies seem to be less frequently attended to than some of the other core subjects. So I was able to work with a great elementary teacher to bring some STEM projects to their classroom that integrated a variety of different subject areas so that it didn't seem like one more thing they had to do, but rather got kids questioning, using their communication and their literacy skills to design and carry out an experiment on balance and motion. This ties in really heavily with the state-level project that I think I mentioned last time that I'm a part of, and it's a Math Science Partnership Grant, where a team of Math Science educators from around the state have gotten together and were coordinating a professional development program for chemistry and physics teachers throughout the state this summer and next summer. And we received the Math Science Partnership Grant to bring modeling instruction workshops to the state. So we have six workshops planned for this summer and next summer all around the state. We're hoping to impact about 300 to 400 educators throughout the state with the impression that we're going to create a sustainable trainer, train, sorry, sustainable, train the trainers' model to be able to continue this work of providing high-quality professional development to STEM educators in the future. You can find out more information at MIModelingInstruction.org. And I'll close with this, our current plan is that we have workshops for chemistry and physics teachers planned this summer, literally all over the state. I'll be working in the southeast region, running a chemistry workshop at Oakland University, where we currently have almost 100 teachers who have applied from all over southeast Michigan to take up about 30 spots in this workshop. So it's, it's a, there's a great need, and there's a great interest in STEM professional development for teachers. And the modeling instruction workshop is a three-week graduate course that's running a workshop model, three, three consecutive weeks of 15 days, and it's based on 20-plus years of research out of Arizona State University on how cognitive science can influence what we do in science education to make, as Richard mentioned earlier, learning science by doing science. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Got to, got to bring your...
All this with a new baby.
Well, I'm happy to show baby pictures at the end.
I have one of those baseballs on a rope.
Can I ask a question? Don't take this the wrong way, but some of the Apple, Apple and education projects, you said they're grant funded, is it Apple that's paying for the project?
It's a great question. So the ones that I'm personally involved with are not Apple-funded, although Apple does have a number of grants that they offer to educators around the country. The ones that I'm involved with, some are funded by Memick Foundation, some are funded by PTOs at schools, and some are funded by district foundations as well.
As you can see, my interest is, I mean, people are going to be using all different versions, or some version of this everywhere, but to the degree that Apple and companies are infiltrating the classroom to sell their products versus, you know, oh, here's some cool things we can do with Apples, versus, hey, there's some unique things we need to help people master, whether they're teachers or kids, that uniquely can use this. I'm always hopeful it's more of the second than the latter.
Absolutely.
I wondered the same thing about you guys.
And you know, this is, I think, if I had to zone in on one of the major impacts that I've had this year in the Michigan Teacher of the Year program, it has been to encourage teachers and educators in general to not look at technology as the I want to say, what would you like your students to know and be able to do? How are we going to know if they can do that? How will we get them to do that? And what tool, maybe it's the iPad, maybe it's pencil and paper, what can we use that's going to be the best tool to support that so that students have the best opportunity? But at the same time, there are also digital skills for digital literacy that kids today are going to need, whether they're using a tablet or a laptop or just mere information transfer.
I was thinking before pencils became common, the pencil makers giving away pencils. How to use pencils in math or writing.
That's right, that's right. Interestingly, I had the opportunity to put together a presentation for the McCall Conference. I did not end up giving the presentation. It was, someone else gave it for me. It was the same week that Lena was born, but it was about the generational signposts of educational technology, and I didn't realize how big of a deal the ballpoint pen was. When it was created in the '40s, it became popularized. In the '30s, it was created, and it revolutionized the accessibility for people to write in ink. And we take that for granted today because you can buy a box of, you know, 100 for a dollar, and the ballpoint pen was innovative technology in its day, and it was a signpost that, well, hey, we could write in a different manner, and we could, we didn't have to have fountain pens that were expensive and needed refills.
All I know about technology is the refrigerator keeps my cereal milk cold and it keeps my post-board meeting beer cold. It all works. It's technology that...
Yes, ma'am.
I just read a book review, a Times book review from a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, about a young man who graduated from, I believe, Yale, and he went off, went to Wall Street and made a lot of money, and he wasn't happy at all. He took a trip, was it, did you read this?
I heard.
Went to India, and he's talking to some man on the street, and if you could get anything you wanted, what would you ask for? The man said, "A pencil." And this just blew this guy away, I guess, and he quit his job, and he started a foundation, Pencils for Literacy, or Pencils for something. But he said, that's the name of it, and it does a lot of things to help people, but it was based on this answer that this man gave that all he wanted was a pencil would be like heaven. That wasn't that long ago, so that's really an incredible commentary.
Our son Mike went on a trip to the Philippines after their hurricane and everything, and they brought, that was the biggest winner by far, were pencils that they were handing out to the kids that we just take for granted in our world. Okay, Marty. And then, you know, it's kind of the Marty Cassandra Show, but we put Marty on the spot first.
In fact, I'm going to invite Wendy down here because she was involved in some work.
Ben, you can't come down here yet, buddy. You've got to wait till next week.
Uses technology to take notes. There was a, we had a legislative committee meeting last week. Several issues were brought up. The legislature's on break now, on holiday break for a few weeks. The House, right before it left, passed what was known as the EAA bill. By the skin of its teeth, it's now open in the Senate for concurrence or amending or however they want to deal with it over there. They did not act on it before they broke. So at the legislative committee meeting, and I will throw it to Cassandra, we did discuss that bill at length and what the State Board would like to do in regards to that bill, where it sits now, and maybe some suggestions that the Board would like to share with the Senate as it deliberates its action. So, Cassandra?
Well, I think we've kind of decided, at the very least, we should probably resend the statement that the State Board of Education has previously approved indicating that we expect there, or we would like there to be some quality measures included in the bill. We kind of kicked back and forth a little bit, some recommended language changes to the actual bill, but I don't think we're quite there yet. Oh, unless you have some...
Well, I just wanted to add something.
Okay.
One of the things that we discussed was some sort of quality standard. So I had, the language that I had provided unfortunately didn't really cover that. So using my iPad, no less, I did some quick research today, and I do have for everyone copies of the quality standards in three states, Maryland, Massachusetts, and Florida, for you to kind of take home today and decide whether or not this is something you'd want to replicate for Michigan. You just take a packet, it's already all collated there, so.
Thank you.
Something to take a look at about, as possible, what you, maybe more what you had in mind.
So, I guess, as I understand it, this legislation doesn't include any either standard or what we were recommending. I thought the language of resolution in January is right, that we would like legislation that calls on us, the State Board, the department, to set some quality criteria, in essence, that we wordsmithed that language pretty well, that educational entities of a variety of sorts could be eligible to receive schools as the, you know, the reform district designated by the school turnaround officer if they meet a certain criteria that we wouldn't set, maybe informed by what other states have done. That said, either they have a good record of performance in helping underachieving schools succeed, or they have a strong likelihood of that ability, so we're not precluding anybody. So I think what I would like to encourage us to do today is to say, we do not support the legislation as written, that consistent with our prior resolution, which we pass on a bipartisan basis, effective school turnaround legislation needs to clearly afford a range of quality educational entities as options to place schools for turnaround, and that it needs to, the legislation must ask the State Board Superintendent Department to determine quality criteria for who are eligible educational entities. And we could do that based on this, but, I mean, that would be the point of the, of our exhortation to the legislature. Those two things need to be there, because I understand that this legislation still only has ISDs, including any old ISD, and I always say, some may have some record of doing well to help lift achievement, others may have never been in the business of helping nonperforming schools perform at all. So you wouldn't want any old ISD to be eligible, and otherwise, it's just the EAA as it currently exists for a year and a charter management company.
Or another district.
Another district, but I think it's written out that that other district is the EAA.
I would disagree with that.
Okay.
It just says any arrangement with another school district.
So you have any district. That does, in my view, that even precludes some other options, that, like nonprofit entities that have a good record, et cetera, but the main point is, any of those options, it's silent, as it was when the cap was lifted on charters, for supporting quality entities to be given that opportunity and preventing ones that aren't quality, as determined by some clear criteria. The easiest would be, you know, like Amber and others were referring to this morning, we should at least be not letting school operators who have a bad record of education take over new schools. This legislation would not prevent someone with a bad record or no record of success in educating anybody from being given schools. So we need quality control criteria. So that would be my encouragement, I'd say we should oppose, we don't support the legislation as currently written. We would like legislation to include language consistent with our prior resolution of a range of entities that could be eligible to manage school turnaround if they are selected by our school turnaround officer, and that we would like to, legislation to call on the State Board Department Superintendent to set the criteria for who is eligible for those to manage effective school turnaround.
Got a motion that you want to...
That is a motion that people will understand.
Your support for discussion purposes? Support by Lupe? The discussion.
Just really quickly, so I feel like there are two separate things that maybe it's worth bifurcating. One is, and I actually need to go back and, it's been now a couple of weeks since I've looked at the legislation, so I apologize if my memory is not as sound as it should be. One is the codification of the EAA. The second is this, the whole notion of who should be, who should be authorized, empowered, allowed to engage in school turnaround efforts. And I haven't actually thought about it a ton, but what occurs to me now, and just in listening to you, John, is the notion that, I don't know, like, if this were a much simpler bill just codifying the EAA, I might be fine with that from the perspective that it's a lot easier to regulate the entity once it's codified, and that some of the challenges associated with transparency and others have stemmed from the way that the EAA was created, when I think any kind of logic, I mean, to overstate it, but what would have been a much more sound strategy from a state perspective would have been to have gone through the process of attempting to codify it from the beginning, right, and have the public debate and so on and so forth about it from the beginning. So that issue may be separate from this issue of who gets to, who gets to attempt to turn around schools.
Except I believe this legislation does both things.
Right.
It doesn't even mention the EAA, but the EAA is there as the eligible school district as previously designated. So this legislation, as it's right now, as I understand it, it does both things.
Right.
It makes the EAA a formal entity, and then it creates these other dynamics around who is eligible
Right.
to turn around schools.
Well, that's my point, exactly. So I, I don't know that I would be opposed to the first thing, like, making this thing actually a legitimate legal entity under state law, or not, that's not the right way to say it, because I mean, it's a legitimate legal entity under state law now, but codified. I might not be opposed to that because I think that there are some corollary, there are some ancillary benefits associated with that.
I'm not opposed to it either.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, in order to do that in the way I know you want, it should be as one public school entity governed by the same criteria
Yes.
as any other entity
Yes.
which would solve the problem of whether it is allowed to have more schools, because we would be setting new criteria
Right.
that in this case would hopefully say, I can't predict, something like, as it demonstrates a record of actually educating kids, maybe then it might be eligible, but right now it's not. I mean, you know, that would be one of the features of our criteria.
Right.
So I think this, what is, this is a way to deal with both the EAA issue and quality control on entities including the EAA. If you separate them out, we're creating an issue that is not there right now.
All right, I don't know. I'm not, so I guess I don't have enough clarity about that. I just know that there might be disagreement at this table about that first issue. There are people here, I'm sure, who would say, I don't want the EAA codified, right? And I don't want to, I don't want to venture down that path, because I think what we do agree on with, with absolute certainty is that whomever is in the business of attempting to turn around our persistently lowest achieving schools should have, have to meet some standards in order to be eligible to do so. So that's the, that's all I'm offering, is I'm just a little, maybe I just don't get it, but the, I was a little concerned about, I get that the legislation does both, and I don't want us falling into the same trap that the legislature has, right, which is like not being clear in a statement because we're trying to tackle two or three things at once. Like, I think the thing we want to tackle here is around who gets to do this work, right? So, that's all I'm saying.
Cassandra?
I'm just throwing this out there, trying to, because I'm sitting between the two of you, but what if we did something as simple as just say, we oppose the legislation as written because it does not address the statement that we've made before, and here's the statement, and leave it at that?
That'd be great with me.
And why is the statement?
The statement...
It's an excellent statement.
Do we have a copy?
It has a lot of really good words. Put in a very good order.
It's already agreed upon unanimously.
On the same page.
And you're restating for purposes of...
And all I was doing in my little narration of my motion was saying the two features of that resolution are, we need a range of educational entities who are eligible, and we need to, we need to, let's just set criteria for these.
Which is in the statement.
So how about, I'm not sure I should be, but I'm not, on how to, is that a friendly something or other?
Yeah.
Maybe I can, I can make a then a signing statement. You know how they do? After you pass the thing, then I can sign, I can say what I think it meant.
That's only in Washington.
George W. Bush.
John Ted.
Yes, I'm past you.
A thought bubble, a cartoon, a signed cartoon.
Richard.
Lupe is suggesting that...
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I make a friendly amendment that we disregard everything John said, and...
Sounds like a really mean amendment.
Instead, we develop a short statement that says, the State Board of Education does not support the legislation as written because it does not address previously stated issues. See attached statement.
The January 14th
Yep.
adoption.
Can I just make a
That's a second.
Mean amendment to your mean amendment? That it does not incorporate elements as previously recommended for effective school turnaround legislation by the Board.
I can live with that.
Okay. That was, that was...
And then this would be...
Add something, then we would approve it? There's nothing else that we would disagree with?
No, it doesn't say that.
No, but I'm saying, so they go, okay, so, well, we'll, we'll add a few little things in there to, so there's nothing else that we would disagree with, with this as it is?
No, it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that at all. It just speaks to
The president.
The unanimous disagreement with it for the absence of this stuff.
Right.
And folks have issued, I mean, you were part of a group of three, I think, that issued a statement before, that issued a statement previously, right? I mean, so like, anybody who, like, reads or cares about this issue would know that there's still a group of folks who disagree with the legislation for this other reason as well.
Okay, I'm just saying, I mean, I think it's something we all agree on. I just want to make sure that we're, there's not something else we can all agree on, that there's something that should be corrected or fixed.
If the statements that were issued before, independently, that we issued independently, it added up to six, I think. We could come to an agreement that put those two things together, but that would be...
This resolution on effective school turnaround strategy does represent that.
But it doesn't say what those statements said, that we were opposed to the expansion of the EAA.
No, and that's where there is some disagreement. For example, Dan and I do not oppose necessarily the EAA ever, 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 or totally, or under any circumstances. I want to support clarity around, effective school turnaround means you give schools to people who help kids learn and perform, and under that kind of guidance, or if that were the law of the land, it would, it would be a test, does the EAA get more schools? No, it's not performing. If it ever shows it can perform, it might get more. If it never performs, let's get rid of it. I mean, that would be, that would be the guidance to that. It doesn't say, I hate the EAA, I want it out of business tomorrow. That's a different perspective that we do have.
Well, that's not quite my perspective.
No, no.
I mean, characterization.
But we're not, we're not saying in our statement who is going to determine which schools...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, okay, so we, okay, we have it on paper
Yeah, the previous one does.
Because they, they can determine whomever, and, but we have to spell it out. What we...
And that's what this...
They can determine that, that my brother here is, can turn it around, that Mike can turn it around, they can, they can be the determiner, but we have to say, the determiner to turn around and who's qualified to do that, they can determine that in the statement that we're making, because...
No.
I think we're saying that the Board...
So our previous statement was that the legislation should require the MBE to establish those statements.
Okay, okay, all right, all right.
In consultation with the Board.
At this point, I think I would support.
Which is the mean amendment to my previous amendment, which I modified just a tad. This legislation does not incorporate our recommendations for effective school turnaround legislation.
Yeah.
Is that all right?
Richard was still on... Richard was still in discussion phase here.
Okay. I believe I voted for the, I believe I voted for this policy on the turnaround district strategy. My one reservation is success at managing school turnaround efforts. I think that success in managing schools would be sufficient for me, but I, but I can accept that language. And, referring the legislation that has been sent to the Senate to this statement, I think, makes sense. I think that, so, I can support that. I would, I would not have been able to support John's statement, or initial phrasing of it there. And, so, I think this is, I think this would be a, this would be a, something I could, I could support on that. I have no strong opinion on the legislation itself, one way or the other, but I think that referring it to our earlier statement makes sense.
Any further discussion?
Just a thought, maybe it's unnecessary. In the second paragraph, is this, it would mean that the MDE would do it, but with, there would be consultation and reporting to the Board about how that's being done? Is that assumed, or is that to be written? You know what I mean?
I think it's got to be assumed, unless we're going to change it to say the State Board does it.
No, in consult, the MDE does it in consultation, so that we're aware, just, if the, you know, next superintendent wants to have another transfer agreement, I would like to know about it.
So...
So, just would like to have it be, make it clear that whatever is open, and we're all aware.
My assumption is that if, in fact, the legislation is changed, or legislation is introduced, that does what we want it to do, that we would all be pretty excited about that, and we would say to Mike, "Mike, make sure you bring that, those proposed standards to us at a meeting, you know, in a month or two, or whenever you have them, for our review and consultation."
In spite of the, kind of the inference of someone else might do a transfer agreement, remember where we were three years ago compared to now, and I think I've made my position clear by undoing that, so I don't think I have to keep doing like a mea culpa.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying it to punish you.
I think there's a point where, where that gets to be unhelpful, when there's continually... That was the only option we had at one time, was to try to find a partner, when the Granholm administration put a law in that I fully supported, that said we needed to have the takeover opportunities.
Really, it's, it wasn't about you, it was about, it's about just having, making sure that...
I'm just saying, it's self-evident, or I wouldn't have canceled the contract.
No, 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 and I appreciate...
But, you're not going to be, there's going to be another superintendent at some point, and so, you know, I think it's...
Soon, I hope.
Right. And, so, all I'm saying is, I would like, we could be very clear that we're fully engaged in, it's a fully open process.
And, we would be expecting, as Dan said, the superintendent to review proposed criteria, and we would be able to say whether we like them or not, or make the recommendations, and ensure that they're conformed to our policy direction.
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay.
And, may I comment too? I, regardless of our individual sympathy or antipathy to what the legislature might be inclined to do with education policy, I think there is a broader issue, and that is, the legis, you know, we are constitutionally to advise them on education, and when the legislature acts without that consultation, I think that's a very dangerous precedent. So, I think that we, again, I think referring to what stands that we've taken advice, we've given already, I think is important, and I think that's the broader issue going forward that, that concerns me the most.
Exactly. I mean, look at Common Core.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not only not appropriately responding to the Board on advice, they haven't, well, they eventually amended and took care of the Common Core, but that was clearly a State Board action, not just advice that should have been supported. And, we had to go through hell last year, as the team sitting here, the whole, both of us, the department and the Board, in getting that authority. It wasn't just the Common Core, it was getting that authority understood. And, I think it's the same thing, frankly, with Sback, but, you know, I don't want to jeopardize the funding on that by saying too much yet. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to call the question.
Yes, so, questions called, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Great. Thank you. We're good? Okay. Consent agenda. Moved by Kathleen. Supported by Dan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Any further comments?
We need to go over there, I do.
The next meeting's April 8, and, yes, ma'am?
I have a presentation. Are we going to close the meeting?
Well, before you, before you hit the gavel...
We have an announcement.
Oh, I have an announcement. Oh, we're in announcement?
Yes, ma'am.
Over in announcement? I have the floor.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, well, Gary, dead, abused, the Board has purchased Princess Piggy Bank for, it's just a little start for, for your new baby's college fund. You cannot touch it.
Wasn't making a lot of noise, because Bill's in there.
Yeah, 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 no, no, I was going to say, we put silent money.
Okay.
I just put a few coins, because he has to jiggle as she grows up, and, but it's all silent money, I hope you all put silent money.
Silent money.
So, again, we want to congratulate you and Janice.
Thank you.
And, we welcome Aliana to this world, and we wish you the very, very best.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
And then, I think appropriately, our last thing today is for John to present to Carol more formally than consent agenda, this resolution.
Up front? Down in front?
Get a picture here.
Okay.
Up front, down in front?
Yeah, we'll wait.
Marty's getting a picture.
Well, this hands, Carol, where are you?
I'm right here, Charlie.
With all the wear ads, and the formal language, all the things that we said, I hope heartfeltly, and sincerely to you, so thank you so much for all your wonderful dedication, and your great spirit, and hard work, which came out of Michigan.
Thank you.
Which you may miss occasionally, but I hope not. What are you going to be doing?
I'm going to be traveling. I'm going to put structure in my husband's life, he's scared to death. Coming home to put structure, and he also bought me a new phone that I have to learn, and we're going to travel a lot, so...
Nice.
But, thank you all. This has meant a lot to me today, and working with so many Boards as I have, I mean, it's just been, Kathy and I go back to when you were President of the Junior Community College Board, so, it's a pleasure, it's really fun to watch the different Boards and how you get along, or don't get along, or have...
It's the meanest Board I've seen.
No. But, I think what I truly appreciate is, almost to a person, over every year that I've been here, everybody cares about the kids, and you're very bipartisan, and I really, really appreciate that. So, thank you for all your well wishes, your words, and 17 more days.
Okay, we're adjourned.